I'd like to do is call the meeting to order. That means we'll do a roll call and then we will confirm that we have a forum, quorum for a forum. And I don't believe that this meeting is going to take a great amount of time. It's a fairly short agenda. So let me call roll Jennifer. Patricia. Carol.
Present.
Paul.
Aye.
Aye. Kurt.
Present.
David.
Here.
And Mike.
I'm here, I said here, I thought.
Oh, I didn't hear you, Mike. I didn't. Bill. You're there.
Sorry, I had to do a reboot before I could join.
Okay, who am I missing?
Nicole is not here.
Nicole is excused. And then I'd like to welcome Doug Woods and Steve Geisels. Do I say that right, Steve?
Like a guided cells, guy cells.
Guy cells. They are your newest board members. They will be joining us as voting members on January 1st. And they will have to put up with all of the November and December meetings. Depending on how many we have in order to do part of their orientation and get a feel for how efficient we are at this. So everybody's here. I'd like Debbie or Ashley to confirm that we have a quorum.
You do have a quorum, Alex.
Thank you, thank you Debbie. Would like a motion to adopt this very short agenda.
I'm going to adopt the agenda.
Okay, second please.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Nobody opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted. And that lets us go to a 30-minute open forum. Do you want to read the rules for the forum, Ashley?
Sure. Members will be given a limited number of minutes to speak with a minimum of one and a maximum of three depending on the number, number of members signing up to speak. The public chat is for sign up only. If you have questions or comments, please sign up. No discussion will take place on the public chat. Speakers seeking a longer period of time can ask if someone else who has signed up to speak will yield his or her time to the speak so they may continue. However, at no time will any member be allowed to use more than six minutes to speak. The board president or the board president or other designated board member or myself will keep a stopwatch and alert speakers when they have 30 seconds remaining. You'll hear about. At the conclusion of the presentation, if the member is speaking from a written statement, they may submit their written statement to the secretary or to Lori via email to assist with its inclusion into the board's minutes. The written statement must be identical to what was verbally presented to the board and no additional material may be submitted. After a member speaks, board members can ask questions of the member for clarification purposes only. The presiding officer will then thank the member for their presentation and move on to the next speaker. Open forum will be limited to 30 minutes to allow the board time to complete business. Personal attacks on board members or fellow association members are strongly discouraged. Profanity will not be allowed under any circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, do you, are you managing the queue?
There is nobody that has indicated that they wish to speak in open forum.
Okay. Last chance. Okay, then we will move on to announcements. Anybody have an announcement? My announcement is that today we will be looking at a draft charter. We're able to put that up, are we not? Yeah. It is still redlined or blue lined by the attorney who went through it last. There's still some discussion points to go over with the finance committee members who are aware of it, have viewed it, and some are in agreement and some are in disagreement. Bear in mind that the finance committee as presently constituted is an interim committee. They do not officially function as a committee until the committee is chartered. That's why we want to look at the charter today and we intend to hopefully use this charter as a prototype for charters for the other committees that we stand up. The board has had it for a couple of hours, I believe. Has everybody had a chance to look at it? And does anybody have comments on? Just tell me now if you have a comment on the charter or a question on the charter as it's written, because as we go through the paragraphs, we may have a few things we want to talk about that will be responded to the interim committee members who have met, a few of whom I believe are observing the call. And I want to say publicly to Pat Kingshaw, thank you for all that you contributed and I'm sorry that you are not continuing on as a candidate for the committee. I'll also make an announcement that we have posted all the gates. 30-day notice up on the gates for anybody who wants. Who wants to apply for a position on the finance committee? And then the process will be for those candidates to be vetted by the board and nominated by board members to the treasurer. The treasurer will run the finance committee and will be the chair. We intend for each committee to have a board member running that. I would also like to say that there has been diligent effort from the interim finance committee members to do revisions to the budget. Those are being prepared as we speak. There are versions of the budget that modify what we originally had approved. There are other versions that have line-by-line items that are cut and there is some additional revenue that was not anticipated in the original presentation of the budget. That budget is scheduled to go to the board on the 19th for approval and best guess, it's going to be a combination of what was put forth by the finance committee and what we originally started with. We will be a lot closer to balanced, but I'd also say that the consideration, the overriding consideration actually this year is that we are doing a transformation of the way we've done business. The two goals are professionalism and consistency. That is dividing responsibility up between the committees and the board and between the committees, the board, and the staff so that everybody understands their roles and are not stepping on each other's feet. So that budget will be up and I believe we'll have it posted by the first of the week so that we can all take a look at it. The community can take a look at it and we will vote on its modification on the 19th, which is only a week away. Today we'll focus on the charter. And I think if we go through it paragraph by paragraph, we'll, it won't take very long. But I think it's important, yes.
Ask a question. The meeting on the 19th, is that? I'm getting a lot of feedback. Is that on the, at 6 o'clock?
The meeting on the 19th, I believe, is noticed at 2. You probably have the old schedule down from. We moved all, all of those 6 o'clock meetings will move to 2 as of, I believe, July or August. So I, it's at 2 o'clock, Mike.
Thank you.
Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. So we will be meeting at 2 o'clock on the 19th. Has any, has anybody formulated some comments in their mind with regard to this charter already that they'd like to speak to? And then we'll catch them as we go through. Yes, Mike?
I apologize for that. Are you getting echo too?
No.
You're not hearing my echo?
No, 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 I'm not.
Okay. I had a question about the two directors who may be voting members. Does one of those include the treasurer? So it's a treasurer plus one or a treasurer plus two?
Treasurer plus one.
Okay.
Treasurer.
I have a question.
I would suggest that you clarify it. The voting members and you should say the voting members would constitute the treasurer plus one other director.
Okay, we're taking notes as you go. Alex? Yes. Who's that?
The title, it's a little confusing. Is it Semiamu Resort or Residence Association?
I think it's wrong in either case. I've got, I've got a comment from Paul that he's got bad feedback from Mike. Such, such is life. With regard to the title. We wrote it as the Semiamu Residence Association Finance Committee Charter. The attorney, Richard Davis, took us back to Semiamu Resident Resort Association. I believe it should say Semiamu Resort Association, comma, Inc., period, Finance Committee Charter. Semiamu Residence Association is a DBA. That is, we're doing business as the Semiamu Residence Association, but legally we are the Semiamu Resort Association, Inc. Does that clarify it?
It, it does. However, it ends up being pretty confusing when you present it as a document to be read by just a regular member of the association. Can't that proviso be somewhere else? I thought we already covered the fact that we can call it the Residence Association as long as there's a notation somewhere. Perhaps as a footnote to this document, it would be, make it less confusing.
Okay, we'll try and make it less confusing, but let me make the comment this way. In the view of council, every official document that we have should have our official legal name on it. Having it followed by doing business as is not a problem, I believe. So we will attempt to clarify that. Does that get us past the title?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay. Pardon me? Jennifer Plumbaum.
I was actually going to ask the same thing Bill asked, so we're good.
You want to still do that or show?
No, thank you.
Okay. Kurt?
Yeah, I have a question about the frequency at which the finance committee reports to the board. I think we originally talked about quarterly, but the last document now is monthly. And that does place quite a burden on the, at least the treasurer, because he has to attend the 12 board meetings, but he has to also probably have, you know, 10 or 12 finance committee meetings. So it's like 20-plus meetings. So I would argue that we should only report to the board quarterly.
Kurt, let me, let me defer that.
Plus the board meetings.
Is there somebody else that wants to speak? We're, if, if we go through this paragraph by paragraph, we'll be able to make business decisions about the legal language that the attorney returned to us. He did, he did change that. The basis of the conversation was that if you are two or three months behind anything that's going wrong with finance, you're too late. But in terms of actual operation, because we have a treasurer who is vested with the responsibility of reconciling the, the bank statements every month anyway. And because the charter in another place says that a member of the committee may be designated to do so, that's an area that we should talk about when we get to that paragraph. And you don't need to repeat everything you said. We understand where you're going in terms of the timing and I believe when we last talked with Joe Southie, he was of the opinion we could meet less often than that as well. So let's look at, let's look at paragraph one. That would be Roman numeral one, the committee purpose. And I think it's important to understand that the committee is here to support the board in its endeavors and make sure we stay in the right direction. There's been some confusion, just a little, about the committee and who it represents. It is not a committee of the community to guide the board, is a committee of the board to help the board vet financial decisions. Is, is that clear to everyone? Anybody have a question about that? Let's move on. The mission and scope and role. There hasn't been much disagreement about this language. A few words have been changed here. So it says, except as otherwise directed by the board, matters of financial concern to the SRA will be first vetted by the committee for recommendation to the board consistent with the committee's purpose. The objective of the committee is to provide oversight of the SRA financial affairs in areas of financial management, accounting reporting, and internal controls, and to perform specific financial, financial related tasks as may be directed by the board. Anybody have an issue there? If not, we'll move on to.
I have a comment. At least one of the finance committee unofficial members voiced some concern about the ensuring that financial internal controls are in place. And that was a distinction between making sure that procedures were available in the SRA office versus actually witnessing work in progress to demonstrate that these internal controls were working. And it's a bit of a distinction, but it is a bigger burden if you're trying to demonstrate actual compliance versus whether the procedures are there.
I, I understand that point and I was involved in those conversations and I would simply remark that one of the reasons we wanted to meet more often was that we do have committee oversight responsibility. They not only need to make sure there is a binder with all the rules in place on a shelf or a digital file that's available. Which of our, which of our board members is barking? Oh, no one will admit it. The, the committee has a.
I tried to admit it. It was my dog, but I muted him.
Okay. The committee has a responsibility of oversight to make sure that they just didn't promulgate a set of rules and set it on the shelf. They have oversight responsibility and from time to time, as is most effective, they will need to be watching over the shoulder of those who get to put their hands on the books. I think that's, that's an important distinction. It was raised by April and I, I think she's right that it needed to be clarified and so I believe here it, it is. And it goes in the direction of oversight rather than just preparing documents and then a year later making sure that we still have documents that are in place. Questions on that?
Yeah, Alex, this is Steve Geisel. Just real quick point of reference. In, in other organizations where I've participated, a lot of those internal controls oversight is taken care of in an audit committee, usually pretty small committee that only gets together a couple of times a year. I don't know if that's being contemplated here, but just food for thought.
That's a good thought. We could, we could easily use this charter and then have the committee designate a subcommittee as an audit committee or designate a member as an overseer, if you will.
Yeah, I really, I really liked that suggestion because I was concerned that if we were required to do that kind of auditing function, then the board, the committee members would have to have a higher degree of, of technical capability than perhaps we wanted on the committee. But if we have a, a separate audit committee that we just appoint to do it once or twice a year, that might satisfy the requirement.
Yeah, we don't want to get to where we have a committee of a committee of a committee of a committee, but yeah, I understand what direction you want to go and I think Steve's idea is a good idea. The committee is seeking to ensure that this process works, not, 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 not to actually do the process. So if, if that makes sense. Unless there's another comment on this paragraph, we could move on. I don't see any to you. Okay. Ashley has a bigger screen than I do. I'm jealous. So I have to scroll and she can see everybody. So I will be referring to her from time to time. That gets us to the term. We have to determine for how long a committee member is appointed. This was inserted by the, I think wisely by council. You can't just appoint somebody and then they're there till they die. Although it might happen. We, we should have an established term. Could be one year, could be two years. I'm looking for suggestions from those who are in attendance. So Jennifer has the P sign up.
Two years. I think a year is not enough to fully get into something.
I understand that point. Anybody else have a comment on that? Anybody agree with Jennifer or disagree with Jennifer? Kurt agrees.
I, I suggest two years, the same as the elected board members.
So you agree with Jennifer? Two years. Okay, there's two suggestions for two years. Do we want to make that paragraph, we want to modify that paragraph to put in a two-year term and then express when the term expires? I think we'll run on a calendar year. Does that work for everybody?
Everybody to expire at the same time.
Okay. Without objection, we will.
Alex?
Yes.
Wally here. I, I believe that everybody expire, their terms expiring at the same time is not a good idea. I think you should have half, half of them alternating.
Staggered and two years. Is that where you're going?
That's correct.
How does everybody feel about that?
Yes.
Great.
Great idea.
Okay. All right, that's the way we'll write it for approval. And we should have this all finalized and ready to approve on the 19th. Okay, that takes us to membership. Those of you who are on the NM committee, you'll see that these paragraphs come in a different orders and you may have seen them before, but I think you have all now seen as of our last finance committee meeting, the notes and comments from council. So in terms of membership, what's been suggested is the committee shall consist of a minimum of three and a maximum of five voting members as determined annually by the board. The board treasurer shall be a voting member and the committee shall serve, of the committee and shall serve as the chairperson. And then as Mike suggested, we'll clarify this to say no more than one other director may serve as a voting member on the committee.
Wally a board member? Not, she shouldn't be.
I'm going to answer Ted's question very quickly. Wally is not a voting board member. She has been meeting with us continually since she took over the ASC. So she doesn't vote, but we don't, we don't slam her mouth shut either. So he's a good contributor. Okay, moving on. I said to the committee of seven, you realize of course that this language does fire two of you, at least. And again, we have posted on all the gates, the opportunity for community members to apply to be on the finance committee. Does anybody have a question about that? Those gate, those signs are up on the gates now. So there will end up being a maximum of five based on this language. No more than two of the voting members can be board members. The point is to not allow the board members to overwhelm the committee members. Everybody clear on that? Okay, we're going to. Okay, unless there's a comment, we're moving on.
Question, question?
Yeah.
Paul here. Who is the accounting manager?
The interim accounting manager is Jennifer Spital. She will serve in that capacity until March 31st, at which point we have to discuss when we get to the budget, what we're going to do in that position, if we're going to continue with outside bookkeeping services or whether we'll actually bring in a person who fits into our strategy and succession planning who has accounting experience. Does that answer you?
It does.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Where are we? I'm in the middle of the blue sea here. Okay, committee members shall be nominated by the board to the treasurer and appointed by a vote of the board. So that's how the pool of candidates will be handled as we gather them together. I believe we will have some indication from the existing interim members as to their desire to continue or not in the next few days. Okay, committee membership is limited to SRA members who meet the minimum qualifications. The qualifications are, committee members shall be SRA members in good standing for the duration of their term. There was some language in here about previous felony convictions and the attorney was not going with that. But I believe that we should be vetting all of these committee members carefully. Should have the ability to attend at least two-thirds of the scheduled meetings. That again is going to swing on how many times we meet. If you're talking about six, Kurt, and you only have to be at two-thirds, that means you only have to be at four meetings a year. So you want to think that through, I believe. Committee member who misses, we have to fill in a number here. If four is all they're required, I'd suggest if they miss two, without excuse, they shall have abandoned their term. Otherwise, you can drive that number off a, a, a different number of meetings per year. That's, that's up to you. What do you think we should do there? Anybody have a comment?
Do make it, oh, go ahead.
I suggest that half the meetings instead of two-thirds perhaps.
Should only attend half?
Know that you are deemed to have abandoned the committee if you can't attend half of them.
That would be two out of four if you're only required to be at four.
That's right.
Yeah, I think we should, we're going to put that item for discussion between. Yeah, I think we should, we're going to put that item for discussion between now and then on the 19th. I, I want the board members to be able to think through that. I have a little bit of an issue with only having a requirement that you have to go to four meetings, and if you miss two, and we know about that by the third quarter, then you abandon your position. I think that's not enough oversight, frankly, but I'm going to leave it to the board to determine, and we'll discuss it, that particular sub-paragraph on the 19. Okay, committee member shall upon appointment execute the most recent board adopted version of the committee code of conduct, which is currently under review, and confidentiality agreements, and shall comply with such documents. These documents may be amended from time to time by the board. The committee members will be required to sign amended documents within five days after adoption of the board. Anybody have an issue with that? Okay, we are moving on to appointment.
The composition of the committee's technical knowledge.
Where are you?
Right here.
Okay, where am I?
You're right here.
Okay. The composition of the committees, committees, technical knowledge should be diverse to enable a wide spectrum of viewpoints and input on matters under consideration. Further considerations for appointments to the committee will include, but will not be limited to relevant business experience, for example, accounting, operations, construction, economics, and business, true desire to serve on the committee, and then an ability to cooperate with others in function within a team. And I'd remind people that a team is not just a group of people or a committee working together. A team is a group of people who trust each other, and trust gives us speed to work. We expect people to be fair as they approach issues. We expect them to advocate their views, but not hang on to them until death. So they'll have to be able to listen to others. So that last qualification is ability to advocate his or her views while listening to the views of others. Any comments or questions there? Kurt?
Yeah, I wonder if some of this couldn't be handled in the code of conduct?
It probably will be reiterated in the code of conduct, but we're trying to also establish that this is a template for standing up each committee. We can discuss that, and if you, you want, if you want to revisit that particular set of requirements, we can do that on the 19th. Anybody else? Kurt, you have further comment?
Well, it just means here that some of this stuff is generic, that doesn't, that applies to every committee. And so the stuff that applies to every committee, I wonder if shouldn't be in the code of conduct, which will be the same for every committee.
Well, it will be the same for every committee, but it's disjointed from the hierarchy of the documentation, which would take us from our CCNRs to our bylaws, to our rules, to our charters, and so on. So if it's redundant, I think that's fine. That's my point of view. Anybody else?
Alec?
Yeah. Bill?
The thought here would be to identify the portions of it that are part of the code of conduct. So you would list it as an, as the, if you wish, code of conduct for the finance committee, and then flag the portions that are the generic code of conduct.
Are you thinking like maybe an asterisk that says, that references back to the code of conduct from each one of the committee charters?
Italize it, an asterisk it, something of that nature.
All right.
I'm looking for a way of satisfying Kurt's concerns.
Kurt's, Kurt's insatiable. I didn't even get a reaction from Kurt on it. All right, moving on. Scheduled, the committee shall meet a minimum of 10 times annually. We've already had a suggestion that this should be cut to six, and we've also had another suggestion to be cut to once a quarter. The way it's written, it anticipates that there is a flurry of activity that takes place beginning June 1 with budgeting process, and that meetings would have to be more frequent during those summer months leading up to the presentation of the budget. I believe that the committee comments sort of beg for that. So we may get away with fewer meetings in the first half of the year, but I think as we get to the second half of the year, we're going to end up being at more than six or four meetings anyway. If you don't want the requirement to be in place that it's 10 meetings, then let's modify that next Thursday, and any of you who want to focus on that particular issue, please have your notes in place and ready to discuss on next Thursday. Does that work? Now, we said how you get on, how do you get off?
Let me jump in here for a second.
Yeah, Mike?
It might make more sense to have more meetings if called by the treasurer. It's, it's like our board meetings. If the, if the head of the board, you, Alec, decide we need a meeting, you say, I think we should call a meeting. But to have to go out and canvass people as to whether you even have to have a meeting in the first place seems to add a little extra burden on having a meeting. And I think if the, if the treasurer who's in charge of things says, hey, we really got a problem, we got to get together, I think that should be good enough to have a meeting.
Okay, so one of the things we'll consider next Thursday is a modification to the meeting schedule that maybe limits the number of meetings to something less than 10, plus any meetings that the treasurer deems necessary. How's that? Okay. All right, how do you get off the committee? You can always resign, but a committee member may be removed by a 60% vote of the board upon such members' failure to meet the minimum qualifications, or if there's a violation of the charter. Any problem there?
Or the code of conduct?
Well, we could reference the code of conduct there. Yeah. Let's put the note down that we want to also provide that there's a boot available if the code of conduct is violated. Okay, moving on. The committee is supposed to deliver to the board as follows. It has the lead role for delivering the budget proposal to the board for the board's deliberation annually by July 1st. That would be the first cut of the budget by July 1st. The finance committee is responsible for establishing the budget development, schedule and calendar, while working with the executive director and the accounting manager, question answered, Paul, and active committees to ensure all input has been consolidated into the annual budget submission. Obviously, there's going to be input from the maintenance committee, there's going to be made input from the staff, there's going to be input perhaps from other committees, perhaps even governance in terms of legal costs or whatever to the budget. So that's the way the deliverables are outlined. Does anybody have an issue there? Moving on. On a monthly basis, on a month?
Right there. On a monthly basis.
Yeah, on a monthly basis, the finance committee shall provide status report to the board of directors detailing the financial health and integrity of, of the HOA to the membership. Therefore, it is ideal for the committee to meet at least once per month, but if you decide to change the number of meetings...